Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the planning commission meeting of August ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. Everyone is here. We were adjusting the podium here, but I will call the meeting to order. And we'll start tonight with the roll call. Staff, may we have roll call?
Chair Williams.
Present.
Um, Vice Chair Sai is absent today and.
Chair Amir.
Oh, sorry, Vice Chair Amir is here and Board Member Sai is absent today. Board Member Woodward.
If present.
And Board Member Debever is absent today.
Thank you so much. Right before we turn to tonight's noticed agenda items, I'd like to give members of the audience an opportunity to speak to items that are not on the agenda if if people so wish to do so. It doesn't appear that anyone present with us tonight wishes to speak on matters not on the agenda. Is there anyone listening in or on Zoom who's raising a hand?
Let me give it just a second in case there's a delay. But I do not see any hands raised.
Great, thank you so much. Any are there any staff briefings tonight for the commissioners or the members of public?
There's no briefing tonight.
Great, thank you. So we will turn then to the minutes for this evening, and we've got two cents of minutes. There's minutes from May tenth. We'll start there. We also have minutes from May twenty-fourth. And I know Commissioner Commissioner Sai and Woodward were absent on the evening of the tenth, which is we've got the two of us. I actually thought the minutes were exceptional. I don't have any changes. They were. I'm so sad Director Tassini isn't here this evening to witness this. They were really well done.
Neither do I.
Great, so I think if I may, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. Second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Minutes approved, so we'll turn to the minutes of May twenty-fourth. And Commissioners Amir and Woodward were absent that evening, and so that leaves just me. And how does that is that a problem?
Well, if Commissioner Woodward and Amir have reviewed the minutes and they are feel comfortable passing on or voting on them that they are able to, if they prefer to continue it to when the other members are here, that is up to you guys.
Okay, so a question for the commissioners. Have you had a chance to review the minutes?
I have, but I haven't compared them to the video presentation.
Yeah, I guess that's what I mean. If you've reviewed the minutes as well as the watch the presentation to.
All right, well, why don't we continue to the next meeting? And I don't know if I need to make a motion to continue. So if someone will.
I'll make a motion to continue to the next to the next meeting, the minutes approving the minutes of the May twenty-fourth.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Terrific, so that will be continued. All right, well, that was quick. So we'll turn now to the agenda, the public hearing item for the evening, and I know this is about a conditional use permit continuation of a of a condition use permit relating to a wireless tower on wheels communication, a cow, not the not the cow issue, though. Is there a staff report this evening?
Yes, there is. So the background of this project is already outlined in the staff reports. So basically, the original the original CUP, a conditional use permit for these facilities was approved in two thousand and twenty-two last year around June, the applicant request for a one-year extension. So it's now expired, and they are requesting for another one hundred and eighty days extensions to allow the permanent facilities at sixteen twenty Tiburon Boulevard to be construct and be in operations. So the applicants here today to answer any question related to the cow project at Fort Beach Road.
Terrific. Are there any questions for staff regarding the staff report?
I'll ask the applicant.
Yeah, okay, so so we'll give the applicant an opportunity to make a presentation, and I if the applicant will stand up. Oh, they're on Zoom. Oh, there, there they are. Great.
And before they continue, Chair, would you mind just explaining the the procedures and the rules that are.
For the applicant presentation. Yeah, and so applicant, first of all, you have twenty minutes on the clock. You don't need to use the entire time, but that is the time allocated to you, and if you could state your name for the record. And I will time you as well. And I don't.
And and just to add that, and then after the applicant's presentation, the commission may ask them some questions, including as well as staff, and then.
You want me to go through the whole process?
Yeah, just so anyone in the public knows.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely, absolutely. Yes, so we'll have we'll give the applicant an opportunity to make a presentation. There will be, if commissioners have questions for the applicant, we will ask that after the presentation. And then we will open the the issue up for public comment, and members of the public will have three minutes, and that includes people here and anyone listening in on Zoom. We'll have three minutes to make a comment, and then we will close the give the close the I'm sorry, give the applicant an opportunity to rebut, and that will be five minutes of rebuttal. Then we close the public hearing and come back to the commission for deliberation and discussion. So that's the process that we follow for every meeting, and we will do that here this evening as well. Thanks for that refresher. Okay, so we'll turn to the applicant, and again, applicant, if you will state your name for the record.
Okay, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Good evening, evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Matthew Moore. I am an authorized agent of Verizon Wireless, and I am the project applicant for our Tiburon Relo Cow extension request. That's before you this evening. As the screen says, this facility, I'm sure you know exactly where it's at and what it looks like, is located at Fort Beach Road. Yeah, and Tiburon. Could you go to the next screen, please, Christie? So just a bit of brief history as to how we got here. An existing facility located at Tiburon Fire Station eleven was decommissioned in two thousand and twenty. What that does to the town of Tiburon is entirely disrupt Verizon's services in the area. We have maps further on, but briefly, topographically speaking, Tiburon is bowl-shaped, and so in order to cover the entire town, you have to have a kind of facility that sits down inside of that bowl, and that's what Fire Station eleven was. Once that came off of line, we had to find another solution. We did initially have another permanent site proposed at sixteen fifty Tiburon Boulevard. We were on our way to hearing there. We installed the install the story poles on the rooftop of that building, at which point the landlord, who was also the same landlord as the building we're on now, had a change of heart and said, you know what? I don't want this here. Would you guys please consider going to this other rooftop with existing carriers? And so that kind of forced us to hit the reset button and start over, which we did. And then we had another permanent facility at sixteen twenty approved last year. At the same time, we had to request a cow extension request because the cow was only approved to be on air a year due to some delays in construction timelines and things like that. We are here again asking for another extension. But at this point, we do have a finite date for completion unless something goes terribly wrong. Again, we have pulled the building permits and everything is set to be on air by November thirtieth, at which point the cow facility will be able to come off air. Next slide, please, Christie. And this is kind of just to reiterate what I've already said, I got a little ahead of myself, I suppose, in practicing my presentation earlier. But the the delays have kind of been beyond our control, and I think the point is we are doing our best to have this up. It will be up by the end of November, and the cow facility is absolutely critical. Without it, there is no Verizon wireless coverage in the town of Tiburon. Next slide, please, Christie. And again, the building permit has been pulled. It's actively under construction now, but part of that requires ordering specific materials that are fabricated specifically for this site. Part of the requirements for constructing a new site where that we matched existing screening and stuff like that kind of it has to be special ordered for the project as is. It's not something that we can order ahead of time, so we have to wait to make sure that there aren't going to be any changes coming from the building department or anything like that before we can order those. But again, everything is moving now, and we do expect to have this on air before the end of the year. Next slide, please, Christie. And so this is kind of just a visual representation of what I was talking about. This is the coverage that existed prior to Fire Station eleven going offline. And so this is what it looked like. You can see Tiburon there and kind of the green in the center, but how it spreads out from there is indicative of that bowl shape. It can't the signal can't escape. The next slide, please, Christie. This is what happens if the cow site comes offline. The red indicates some, you know, outdoor coverage, but the areas where there is absolutely no cover are dead spots, and that pretty much would comprise the entirety of that downtown area. And next slide, slide, please, Christie. And this is what happens with the cow online. And so it's just, again, maintaining coverage in the entire area. The new permanent facility will do this as well. We just need to have the cow there to maintain its coverage until that site can go online. And that's really all I have at this time. We do have additional members of my team here. We have Duran from D-Tech. I know that the public did have some questions regarding you know, me emissions and things like that and cumulative reports. I would say that as part of the construction timeline, I was talking about something to consider as well is that there are already two other carriers up there. And since we have had our site approved, AT&amp;T has made upgrades to the site, and so is PG&E. And so part of the delay with that also is we just kind of had to get in line and wait our turn. There's no real way to get onto that roof and do anything extensive at this point unless you get a crane out there and lift the equipment up there and stuff like that. So that has caused some of the delays, too. We do have a representative, Yvonne Pinto from Verizon Wireless today, too. She's online. If you guys have any further questions about that or if the public does. And one question that the public did have was about the sequel exemptions here, and we kind of fall under two categories for those exemptions, class three and class four. Class three, because it's such a minor installation, the lease area itself is under eleven hundred square feet. And class four, because there are no environmental, I mean, impacts, so to speak, where there's no trenching, there's no digging, there's no foundation, there's nothing permanent about the site. As soon as the new site goes on air, we retract the law pull into the truck, pick everything up and and drive it away, and it'll be like it was never there. And one final point that I did want to address, although Duran can talk about that a little bit more is the concern about the trees surrounding the cow. Now, I know that I don't live there, so I don't see them every day, but I did compare them to pictures. We've got pictures today and compared them to pictures from a year ago, and they do look very similar to me. And aside from that, another consideration is that a lot of times when we're building new facilities, we look for existing trees on site to serve as natural screening and cover. And we do it all the time, and if the sites were killing the trees around these sites, it would be very obvious that this that this was a problem. But again, I'm not the technical expert, but just as a matter of course, and how we'd kind of look for these things on the wireless side.
Okay, well, it sounds like perhaps that's the end of your portion of the presentation. Did you want to continue during this? You still have time left. You're about seven minutes in, a little over seven minutes in. Did you want to speak to some of the address some of the questions that came up now or reserve that for the five-minute rebuttal period?
I'd like to reserve that for the rebuttal period, please.
Okay, and are there? And thank you for the presentation. By the way, there was some additional information that that was that you have supplemented, which was very useful, I found. And curious if there are any questions about the presentation we've heard thus far?
Yeah, so just to understand. Thanks for the presentation, by the way. The delay, the the delay has been caused largely because the owner of sixteen fifty first committed to it and then and then postponed, I guess, then decided to move from sixteen fifty to sixteen twenty. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So it's not related. The fact that there's other carriers on the roof is not really relevant, is it?
Only in that, and I can let Yvonne speak to this more, but only in that we can't have everybody up there at the same time working on their sites. And so it's my understanding that we kind of had to get in line and wait for the other carriers to finish their upgrades. It was only a few months before our site at sixteen twenty was approved, where I believe AT&amp;T had their, you know, ten or fifteen-year use permit extension request approved. And part of that approval also required them to install FRP screening, things like that. And so that changes structural considerations, and so just I do you know that there was a kind of first come, first served, and we had to get in line for that as well.
Okay, and then the November thirtieth, I mean, this is a hundred and eighty-day extension to January eighth, basically. What is? How did that? I mean, how how set is that date? I mean, are you pretty fairly confident? Is it? Are we going to be sitting here in six months dealing with another extension?
I certainly hope not. It's my understanding that that timeline, again, unless something goes horribly horribly wrong, is is finite.
And this is Yvonne Pinto from Verizon. I can speak to that a little bit further. Our original permit expired on July eighth, so a six-month extension not only allows us our forecasted date of eleven thirty, but also provides that buffer that if anything we need to tweak along the if an inspector comes in and says you need to change something. It allows us that extra month or two there to make sure that that happens. But our goal is to hit that eleven thirty date or bring it in earlier than that if we can and remove the cow as soon as possible.
Terrific. And you did, I believe you indicated that construction has already started.
Yes, yes, it has.
Just curious on the tree question. Is there any evidence that you're aware of that wireless communication towers impact trees?
Not that I'm aware of, no. And it just like Matt mentioned, we frequently are asked to use trees as screening the the natural without installing artificial. So if we and not just us, but AT&amp;T, all the other carriers, if we were installing sites adjacent to trees and there was an effect on the trees, we would know about it. And the comparing the pictures from a year ago to the ones that Complete Wireless took today, there appears to be no change.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Woodward?
Yeah. Just, this is one of the very first things that I worked on, you know, way back, twenty twenty, as we were starting to do the first conditional use permit for a year and then extensions, extensions, extensions. And I recall, you know, sort of the more recent one where this was an absolute guarantee this was going to get done during the period of the last conditional use permit. So I have heard you guys say you know, that there are other construction going on or other people working on the towers. And a few other things, I think that the movement of the buildings took place before the last extension. So I just you, we feel, I feel that it's a little bit of a hard position here if this doesn't get done in time. So I'm just wondering if you guys have any sort of internal you know, metrics or reward structures, incentives to make sure that this happens. You know, is this prioritized over other projects, given how long it's taken? And how many extensions you've gotten, or you know, just obviously, things happen at large corporations. So where does this fall in terms of your priorities? Or the overall Verizon's priorities?
I can answer to that. It is our top priority. When we discovered we were having, I've been on on the other side pushing AT&amp;T and PG&E to finish their upgrades so that we could get in there and pull our permit. So I'm my goal is to absolutely push this. And I do not expect, because there are no carriers and no advanced work by PG&E that needs to be done at this point. I we
Hope you're breaking up a bit.
By November, and I will continue to push it and make it.
A priority. You broke up a bit, but I think we got the gist of the yeah, the thrust of it. Do you? Do you? You may not be able to speak to this, but do you know the nature of PG&E's upgrades? Were they safety related or do you have any insight?
It may have had to. Honestly, I'm not sure. Frequently, when you're talking about adding a new carrier to a roof, you're talking about upgrading electrical panels, you're talking about moving conduits so that the service can be provided to all three carriers. Usually, that's what's involved when you're adding a carry an additional carrier to an already existing co-locatable roof.
Okay, so it was probably related to the services that they're located there.
Yes, ma'am.
Great. Any further questions? Okay, I don't have any further questions either. So I'll open up the public hearing and and invite members of the public to speak if they wish, if they so wish. Yes, please step up to the microphone here. And yeah, I believe the microphone should be on. And if you could state your name for us and.
Sitting or standing?
Probably sitting would be easier to, yeah, reach the microphone.
And you have three minutes.
Can you hear me well?
And I will go. Let me give me one moment just to reset the clock here. Okay, thank you. Again.
Okay, my name is Maria Lambert. I wrote quite a few emails to Christie. Hi, nice to meet you, Christie. My main concern here is safety, health safety. So the first time I heard about this tower being temporarily located on the parking lot of Beach Road was the first time that I reacted because I'm very familiar with many trees in Tiburon. If I may tell the gentleman of Verizon. In fact, I was watching them very closely during the drought. They were not sick until the tower came along. So I am a witness to that. I can tell you those trees were fine. And when the tower came, the side of the tree that is next to the tower gets sick like burns. And then if you look at the building at sixteen twenty, the same thing happens. Also, the trees are burned on the side next to the towers. I found it quite interesting that only recently they are putting metal barriers around the towers. So maybe that's something that could protect the trees. So besides the trees, I am mostly concerned about the people, the public. My very humble research has led me to believe that as per the FCC website, a fiveG tower should be at least thirteen hundred feet away or four hundred meters away to bring the exposure down to the general public to get to that precautionary level of one hundred micro watts per meter squared. So that to me is a concern because right now with the locations temporary or not temporary, we are in the middle of town. We have a daycare behind there. We have restaurants and people outside. So I would like to know from everybody has some kind of a research been done in the town of Tiburon to assess the radiation levels existing right now with the current towers? Because my feeling is that we're going to get more. And it's normal. We are in a technological age. Everybody needs coverage. I understand that totally. But I also understand there are other locations where those towers can be placed instead of on top of a building with people inside that building. So I would like to be reassured, I guess, that everything has been done to ensure independently that no matter how many towers come to town and no matter where they are placed, we can all walk around feeling that we're not being microwaved. And the trees getting sick.
I'm just going to give you the three minutes. You're at three minutes, so I'll give you a minute to wrap up. It's a small group today, so.
All right, well, if if I had to stop here, I'll stop here. So again, I hope all the research is done for the safety measures for trees and people.
Thank you so much for your comments. Yeah. Anyone else? Yes. Absolutely, of course. Yes, yes, this is your time to do that.
I'm sorry. His question was whether or not he can offer the another person to use his three minutes, and that's not that's not something the town allows.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He wanted to allow the previous speaker to use his three minutes.
Oh, yeah, no. Do you want to speak? You have an opportunity to speak for three minutes if you'd like to share. And rather than, yeah, appointing Maria, well, we'd love to hear from you.
Maria is my neighbor.
And what is your name?
The Point Tiburon Lagoon condominium project. So I've seen.
I'm sorry, I missed your name.
Oh, my name is Walter Iberti, I-B-E-R-T-I.
Thank you.
So I saw the letter that Maria, I previously read the letter that Maria sent to the commission. And, you know, requesting pointing out what her fears were and what the FDA requirements state. But her concern about the distance of the tower to residences or to individuals. And you know, her concern for the future with the city planning. If you folks are going to take any initiative to do your own investigation or hire an outside firm that will either substantiate the information that she found in her research, which seems to be contrary to what Verizon is is saying, that it's a safe safe location. And I also questioned the damage to these redwoods because we moved here in two thousand and seventeen and you know, we were walked to town when we walked to town, you know, a lot. The trees were all appeared to be healthy, and they they continue all the way down the driveway of of Point Tiburon Lagoon. And then even the walkway that goes out to Tiburon Boulevard, they're all redwood trees. And all of them seem healthy except the one next to the tower. And I specifically noticed it, I'd say, maybe I think two years ago and wrote to the planning department questioning if by any chance that tower was causing a tree to brown out. I never got a response to my letter. And then Maria also shared with me her concern. So we were both on the same page. I haven't done the research that she's done commendably for her. But I read it, and I have exactly the same kind of questions about location. And then I just wanted to understand from Verizon that you have a November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three date where you believe you'll be moved in.
And I'll ask you about fifteen seconds if you could start to sort of wrap, yeah. Finish that question.
Will there? Will there? Will? Would there be another extension if that date's not met? And we we and you guys give them a hundred and eighty days. Would that be the end? And then it's up to them to go find another place?
Okay, thank you so much. Yeah, I really appreciate the comment. Anyone else here tonight with us in in the room who wishes to speak? Doesn't look like it. Is there anybody listening in online?
I don't see any hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, great. So we'll invite the applicant up for the rebuttal, just to address really the question. Okay, great. So we'll all invite the applicant up for the rebuttal um just to address really the questions that have come up. Rebuttal sounds so litigious. Um, it's really providing information um and and responses. So I'm going to um. There will be someone online again, yeah. Who wants to speak to that?
Uh, good evening. Um, my name is Durang Tech. I am the uh. I'm an engineer and a chief engineer and founder of B-Tech Communications. Our company provides RF emissions, safety analysis to wireless carriers. Uh, as well as uh companies like NBC, Universal, Kaiser and so forth. Um, in this particular case, our company was hired by Verizon through um. Complete wireless to do an analysis of um, uh, to do an actual measurement analysis of the site of the cow. Or sell on wheels. And we've actually have pictures uh regarding the trees. We have pictures from twenty twenty-one and. We twenty twenty-two and us most recently as this year. Uh, as twenty twenty-three and and regarding the um, the immediate vicinity of the the tower where the uh. The the trees, maybe I'm not, I'm not privy to the the ones that are being um addressed, but. Uh, we, it looks as kind of the same to me. Um, first of all, that's just my opinion, but then. As far as um, as far as FCC rules and the regulations, there's no um, there's no guidelines in place. At this time for trees or animals and so forth. They do have guidelines, however, for uh human exposure. And and as part of um, as part of Verizon's, I guess, permit is that we. They hired us to to go out and actually conduct measurements around the antennas, around the cow. Uh, where public may be uh walking around accessing the area. And the the measurement results that we find is very, very low. Uh, it's one point one percent of public limits. For continuous exposure, that's the maximum uh area, uh maximum level, I should say, and then. Uh, it, what we, what we measure is actually not just Verizon, but all the RF um. Like a radio signals, TV signals and even people from even EMF levels. From the nearby homes or buildings and so forth. And so um this, this level is very, very low. We would consider this as ambient noise. So as far as the. Uh, as far as the level, it is very, very low, below public uh FCC uh. Guidelines. Now, uh, with regard to the the thirteen hundred feet uh. Um, me uh to be away for five G antennas um. That is supposedly on the the FCC website. Um. I did a little bit of research before we got on this call and I believe this claim is was made by a private website. Who sells EMF blankets, hats and such uh like equipments like that. Now FCC wouldn't give you this, wouldn't make such um. Uh, basically, um. That kind of vague claim because distances. Uh, distances depends on uh the 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 frequency, the power. The antenna, the heights above uh the above the ground, many, many factors involved. So uh, so I I don't believe this is that it was the FCC that made that kind of claim. Um, and also there's a, is, it's not ten, uh, it's not one hundred mil, micro watts per. For for meter squared, it's one hundred micro watts per centimeter squared. So I even found that mistake as well and in this other um private website. So um to 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 sum it up, that uh. The 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 exposure levels from this uh from this cow is 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 very, very low compared to FCC limits.
Thank you. Uh, just a point of clarification or just just yeah, point of clarification, when you said the uh measurements, i- it's about one point one percent of public limits. And I had understood that you were saying that was sort of key, you were measuring cumul- cumulative impacts, not frequencies from the tower, but. From other sources in the area.
That's correct, yes.
Any uh, any questions for the applicant? No.
I I would, this is Yvonne, I would add one thing to uh Durang's um. Very succinct um summarization that this cow specifically doesn't have five G installed on it. It doesn't have five G antennas.
That that is very true. I I forgot to mention that. Thank you, Yvonne. That's a good point, yes.
And I actually do have a question. It's a bit of a uh question perhaps for for Verizon and for staff. Um, and give me one moment if I may. The commu- the wireless communication facility standards that are the town of Tiburon standards. I've assumed they're quite detailed, they're long, that these, this is the FCC, this, this is pulled from. The regulatory agencies. Um, I mean, we are looking at the standards that apply to all wireless communication towers. In California, in in. Just what is the basis for this very comprehensive set of standards that we have regarding these types of towers?
So the standard that the town have currently is consistent with the uh FCC regulations.
Federal regu- regulations.
Yeah, uh, you know, neither Christie and I are here when they were drafted and adopted, but they were pulled from. And you, and the FCC guidelines and all the um requirements from the regulations were consulted. And we're intended to comply with that.
And are they periodically reviewed to so that they're up to date?
Yes, and I.
Up to date?
Yes, and when we review applications, we often go straight to the FCC, to the regulations because we just to be sure.
Just to double check the specific regulations that would apply in 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 the this, the instance.
Yes.
Um, okay, and then and and I under- I understand that there's, there aren't um really standards relating to trees or animals. There are, the standards are focused on humans. Does the town do any independent kind of, is there any independent inquiry into that issue?
So there isn't um no standard currently in um in the town and in FCC related to um assessing tree health being.
And probably that's because you, you are, you, your standards comply with the, with the law in terms of what's required.
That's correct.
Uh, okay, well, those are my questions. Any other questions for for? Before we.
So in the open.
We are still, yes, and I would, if there are questions for the applicant.
No questions, yeah. No, I'm okay. Okay, I have, I have, I have a staff question, but.
Uh, well, if if it relates to the presentation.
Yeah, so I guess the. So staff is um. So with regards to um the trees and. So just understand the staff, staff never, never went to look at the trees, never, 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 never really responded to. Any of the neighbors. Uh, we complaints requests because. Uh, because the, because we're just in line with the FCC uh FCC standards and therefore there was no need to. I'm just trying to understand if we actually did, if the staff actually did something with that.
And may I piggyback, just a piggyback question? There were, there was reference made to photos and um are the photos in the staff report in any of the exhibits?
The photo is um, I.
I'm sure they are. I just, um, no.
Are you related to the photos uh of the tree or of the facility itself?
So we, the um applicant had indicated that there were photos of the trees from twenty twenty uh twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-three. And 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 he represented that that they don't, the trees do not look different from his viewing. But I, I'm just wondering if we've seen the photos, if they're part of the record, if they're part of the staff report.
Um, I think this is best for the applicants to chime in as well because this is in relate to the documents that they have submitted to the town.
Yeah, that'd be great. There's lots of documents, I know.
Photos I was referring to uh was that in our report for the measure, the uh. The measurement re- report. So in the, in the report, we put a set of photos that we see. Sort of like a general view of of, you know, of the of the cow and close up of the antennas and equipment.
And I was looking at that report, so give, give us a moment if 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 um, we may just maybe take a moment. So that's gonna be exhibit. Um, uh, give me this, I think it's, oh shit, I just lost it, exhibit.
I think it's exhibit six, but um I'm not one hundred percent certain if that's the same one you're talking about, but it looks like exhibit six.
This is taking a little while to download over on our end, um, at least for me.
It is mine too.
Exhibit six, page nine, looks like they have pictures of the sell-on wheels and there are trees in it.
I think it'd be great, good for us to take a moment to look at those, if the, if the server downloads it. Eric may have to share his, he's, he's. I did two, but I did two, but.
And and we're gonna try to, we're gonna try to put some of the pictures on the screen for the public as well.
Actually, I don't think it's six, I think it's.
The challenge for me was that the, the photos aren't dated. So it's not like there's a comparison of the three years that we just heard. The applicant reference.
What's, what numbers that I, oh, here it is, I think it's exhibit eleven. Is it this one, right? It's the radio frequency exposure report?
Uh, we've got. Get it, you, you, it's also, I mean, they're in multiple places.
Yeah.
But again, the in six, which is the actual application that they submitted.
That's just not, okay, here finally, it finally came up, yeah.
This is Yvonne Pinto. I would add that the previous years um D-Tech did the previous reports and there are pictures in each of those reports. So while we didn't put them in our presentation, the prior reports, they were submitted to the commission each time. So they should be in the past record. As far as the pictures of previous.
Yeah, understood. If we looked back, we we could con- confirm that these were taken in the years that you've indicated.
Yeah, and I guess the the challenge do, even for the photos like in this report dated seven twenty-eight, twenty-three. By Jamie Santos, uh. Is this photo? Also taken in.
I can, I can attest that the photos were taken at the same time. We actually flew Mr. Santos out.
Ah.
And and there was a very, a very, you know, a a rush to get this done. So we flew him out specifically so he could be on site to take all the measurements and take new pictures.
Okay, that's helpful. Maybe. It, ho- hopefully there is no go forward, I'm sure there's gonna be six G and seven G coming soon, so uh, but. Uh, maybe just getting dates on the photos uh just for reference purposes would be helpful. But I will take it as your uh, as the report date networks. Thank you.
Oh, thank you for giving us the time to find that um and view the photos. Okay, any, any other questions? And if not, I'll.
Yeah, just uh, so staff never went to see the trees, but.
So I cannot speak to the previous planner who processed the original um applications. And whether there was a response provided um for questions related to tree. But I, uh, when I processed these applications, I didn't take photos of the existing facilities on the site right now.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, okay, so I think that that um some uh concludes our question. So I'll close the public hearing and just return to the commission for deliberation. Um, and if there are volunteers, I'm happy to start unless someone wants to volunteer.
Add one more question to staff, can. Um. What happens, I mean, is there, is there a process? Except denying an applicant that comes again and again for an extension? Um, in terms of fine, in terms of. Any new requirements, et cetera. I'm just trying to understand if there's like. Not saying bad behavior, but i- in a way, if uh, if if there's a scenario here that January rolls on. And again, we're here asking for an extension. I mean, is there any repercussions for that for an applicant?
Um, there, you know, the 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 commission does have some authority to impose uh conditions that are, have a nexus to the application. Um, so we can consider what those might be um i- with with a little more time to think about that. Um, if the, you know, if for some reason they didn't have a permit, um. Then conce- conceivably, there could be some sort of enforcement action taken. Um, so those would essentially be our, our mechanisms for um leveraging uh compliance.
Okay, all right.
Okay, well, I'd be curious to hear the, my fellow commissioners' thoughts on that, on those ideas. Um, and I may have, I may, I may be slightly in the minority in that I. And this is partly just the the nature of the work that I do, is working on projects and infrastructure projects and dealing with permits. And and these things can take time, especially during the pandemic and and in recent years when there have been delays. There just have been delays. Um, and and some, with something like this where we have PG&E going up there and upgrading. Infrastructure, I I would actually, I I personally um think that that shouldn't be rushed necessarily. We want, we want these things to be done well and to be done properly and safely and correctly. So I I I definitely understand because we have been here through multiple requests for extensions. So I do understand that there is um a sense that we've been really accommodating with the timeline. And that we we likely won't be accommodating with the timeline past January eighth. Um, and I I think uh, uh, I I, you know, I'd be open to hearing ideas about conditions, but. Um, I think this is a reasonable request under the circumstances. It is a short period of time. And we've just learned tonight that it it likely will be even shorter than we had anticipated coming into the this evening and that construction has begun. And there is an alternative permanent location in a proper place, in a commercial areas. Look, as you look at the standards. Sixteen twenty meets the, it meets the federal guideline, the federal standards, and these are the standards that we. That we have to abide by. Um, uh, um, you know, the the permanent location is satisfactory. Um, this temporary location, it's a little bit longer. It may, it may be an inconvenience and there are concerns which are valid, legitimate. We really appreciate hearing. Um, and I think it's, you know, really something for us all to take in as we think through future standards. And hopefully advocate the policy level at the state, you know, federal level for. Uh, even more stringent standards, but that's not what we have before us tonight. Um, I don't think it's necessarily fair to create standards for one applicant that don't exist for other applicants in the same situation. I think that's a, an inequitable sort of result if we were to impose that tonight. Um, and so I think under the circumstances, I would be inclined to grant this limited extension, saying on the record that it would be really problematic. If the applicant came back again and had additional reasons for not being able to construct, addition, didn't have legitimate, reasonable reasons. For uh further delays. Um, but I I'm inclined to grant this request for a limited extension. And I'd really, you know, encourage the applicant to just keep, keep putting the pressure on because they're hearing frustrations from the planning commission. And from residents that it's just taking a long time. So that's my, I think that, oh, in terms of the trees, um. I really appreciate the sort of anecdotal evidence. Um, I definitely. Have value, you know, nature and trees greatly. It's, it is also a part of the work that I do. I think there are lots of reasons why trees, you know, I, as I look at the um. Pictures, I'm not seeing uh extreme evidence of of disease or damage. There are so many reasons why trees could, could be dry, could be um uh. Suffering, not the least of which is drought and disease. So I just, I just think it's not, it's not a part of this, we're not, we don't have standards before us that. That require us to to take, to take, to to assess that independently and I don't have the expertise to do that. Um, and again, given that this is a very temporary, we're talking about a couple more months. And this installation will be removed very quickly, within twenty-four hours, which was also good news to hear. So that's my. View. Others.
Um, so uh, yeah, I think I've um, I think I've been here, maybe this is like the fourth time over the years. Of of approving uh or dealing with um conditional use permits with regards to cellular towers. I think that the um. Yeah, I I think that the 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 biggest, obviously, the biggest concern that we always have is, I think, related to safety of human beings. And, you know, safety of of the environment when it comes to cellular, um, you know, uh, frequencies, et cetera. Uh. I think the challenge is that there's really not, I I don't think there's enough evidence um to say one or the other. And uh through pictures, you know, which are not really clear, is the tree because of this or because of that. And, uh, through pictures, you know, which are not really clear, is the tree because of this or because of that. And at the end of the day, our, the, the town's, uh, antenna policy or wireless antenna policies is based on FCC guidelines, and I think that we need to be aware of that. Um, uh, that the town would not do something that is not based on kind of what the FCC requires. And whether something on the website says four hundred meters and, you know, um, the consultant here says that, um, that's, it's, it's unlikely, it's coming from a different website, it's, uh, it's, has to do with heights, frequency, location, et cetera. So I don't think it's really clear, or neither do we have the expertise to say, you know, is this safe for humans or not, um, to some extent. So I think we have to stick with the FCC guidelines as it's reflected in, in our policy. Um, that said, um, I also think that, uh, you know, the applicant needs to be aware that, you know, this, this would be, I think, would start becoming an issue if this shows up on our desk in January eighth. Um, I think it's a fair request as well here to ask for this extension. Uh, given that some of the issues here were not due to, um, uh, applicant's fault of the owner of sixteen fifty, changing it to sixteen twenty, the issue of AT&amp;T and PG&E being there before and they had to wait. Um, I think that is all, um, that's all a fair reason. Uh, but, uh, I think the applicant stated for the record here that they expect that by November thirtieth it would be completed, so, uh, and they have a safety net until January eighth. So let's, uh, I'm, I'm okay in extending this with, um, uh, without, without stricter conditions, I think, right now. Uh, but I think in January, if we're back here, I think that there will be, you know, potential steps we will need to take if that occurs.
And before I, may I just add something to my comments, just because I do think it's important for, for the record in terms of, you know, um, uh, point of view, uh, in looking at the specific findings we need to make, um, when granting a conditional use permit and extension, I, you know, I, I, I'm, I, the, the staff report was really helpful there, and I feel comfortable making those findings, and one in particular stands out to me, which is the, uh, it's sort of, it's a, it's a balancing test in a way, and it's, it's number four, um, uh, uh, gosh, they're always so long, under section sixteen dash fifty two dot zero four zero D, um, about the protection of public interest, health, safety, convenience. We're really weighing, we're having sort of a balancing act, and here I do think we have to take into consideration that if, if service were to be lost, that would have an impact on a very large number of people. And, and that is an important factor here. So it is, it's a bit of utilitarian analysis where you're trying to figure out, you know, the, the costs and the benefits, but I think it is, it was clear that service would be greatly impacted if this were, if we were to not extend this, especially under these circumstances. So I just wanted to, to note that as well.
Um, I, great points, uh, by both of my fellow commissioners. Thanks for sharing your thoughts first. Um, I, I mean, I think what we're hearing from a lot of the public is clearly concern, uh, at least of the people who are here and, and took the time to write in, uh, concerns around kind of the health standards and, and what the town broadly speaking, uh, has done in the past and is doing. And I think, you know, our, our applicant here just happens to be the, the target, uh, because they've got something in front of us today. You know, I think the reality on the, um, towers, whether it's the, uh, cow, the cell on wheels, or it's the permanent one, they're not that far away, uh, from a location perspective, and one's gonna move to the other. So I think the broader question we really should be asking is, you know, what are the implications of the permanent cell towers? Um, both in terms of on vegetation and trees, uh, as well as, you know, maybe even more importantly, uh, or equally importantly, uh, the human life around it. And when I go back and look the, uh, wireless communication standards that the town is, um, operating under, you know, they haven't been updated for five years. It looks like the previous timeframe, you know, they did one in two thousand and five, one in twenty ten, so it's a five-year period, and then not again until twenty eighteen. Twenty eighteen happens to be the year that five G came out, so clearly we don't have any, you know, kind of, uh, standards or understanding of what five G implications may or may not be and how they apply. And I'm, I'll, I'll take some ownership. I'm frustrated myself that I didn't think about this as we were doing the Tiburon twenty forty planning, because clearly that could have been something we could have, you know, kind of woven into the discussion and talk track, but I guess, at, at a minimum, I would want on record that I do think, um, we should push to town council to look at, as we're gonna have a permanent site with at least three cell towers on it with five G towers, to really have an updated understanding and to maybe not just rely on what the FCC said, because clearly the FCC has, um, strong incentives to align with other companies that sells, you know, very expensive, uh, cell tower auctions or cell spectrum auctions too. So, um, you know, maybe there is a way that we could be actually kind of a leading town in terms.
So, uh, Commissioner, I just want to remind you that we're only here to talk about the cell on wheels and.
Coming back to the topic at hand.
Yeah.
For this, I think that, uh, clearly, uh, they've met the requirements to ask for the extension of time. Of that being said, you know, I think last time we came and we had this discussion, we said we wouldn't do this when it came for this. So I, I respect, uh, our Chair Williams in kind of articulating, obviously going through a pandemic, things slowed down, there were more challenges than anyone expected. And also, uh, Commissioner Amir, and talking about PG&E, and obviously you've got a sequencing evidence, if that's gonna be the power that's gonna drive it. So ultimately, I think giving another six months makes sense, uh, at this point in time, but, you know, would be, would like to ask, uh, staff, if you guys would at least be prepared next time to have some remediations and some penalties and some incentives to really help drive this to conclusion. I feel like that would have been helpful the last one, six months ago, to spur action here. So.
Great.
Well, just on that point, I mean, I, I think, uh, that's something that staff can certainly consider if we ever have to come back, but I do want to point out that the conditions of approval do include ongoing requirements to maintain, um, you know, the radio frequency standards, and in addition, if those standards change on the federal level, then the, then Verizon would have to comply with whatever, uh, changes are, are done.
Right, right. Yeah, I really appreciate that sort of guidance that Commissioner Woodward has offered up in terms of future thinking around this more broadly across the town. But it sounds like we have consensus tonight, uh, to grant the, um, the, um, application. Uh, and so I'll move to adopt the, um, uh, draft resolution conditionally approving the application, including that condition that limits, um, this, uh, conditional use, um, to, um, be in operation until January eighth, twenty twenty four. So that's the motion on the table.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Well, is there, um, a finding about?
Oh, and it's exempt from CEQA.
And then there, there was a typo, and I know you guys do like to catch typos.
Yeah.
On, uh, the, the second whereas on page three, there's just an extra I, um, it's meant to just talk to subsection B and D of section sixteen five two oh four oh. We forgot to remove, um, the I that is there, so we would just remove that to make it very clear.
So can I just amend the motion to include that correction that you just stated for the record?
That works.
And to include that, well, I, I, we haven't talked about it, but I was convinced by staffs, the staff report in terms of the CEQA exemption, categorically exempt from CEQA. Just given the limited nature of use. So we can add that to the motion as well, that there's a finding of it.
Sure, and, uh, does, if somebody, maybe if somebody would want to repeat the motion since I interrupted, I apologize.
I, I will probably just refer, so, um, so, um, I'll, I'll make a motion, um, to adopt the draft resolution conditionally approving, um, the application, um, including the, uh, limit, um, uh, of operation to January eighth, twenty twenty four, um, including this one, uh, correcting the one typo that you have noted for the record, um, and also, and including a finding, um, that the project is exempt from CEQA.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries and meeting is adjourned.
Great.